All right, the November 7th, 2022 city council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to follow up with which is the stance of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve, and that brings us to communications petitions and awards. And this evening, we have a proclamation to recognize the Soother and Crim family for the Airline Dairy Cream, so if anyone would like to join me at the podium.
All right, well, tonight, we're doing something very special in honoring a Van Dalia institution way back in 1964 on Valentine's Day. That is the first time that Airline Dairy Cream opened. And I know, thinking back that far, we've got a couple of council members who weren't even alive then. So we're very thankful that you decided to call to Van Dalia your home. And it didn't take long for the Airline Dairy Cream to become a landmark here in Van Dalia. I mean, it was often, you know, a time to go after ballgames, celebrate victories after dinner, take the kids out. That's usually what we did in our family, because the kids would be saying, "Let's go get ice cream." It's been a tradition in our family for many years. And also, we mentioned that Airline Dairy Cream has been family-owned and operated the entire time, going back to Fred Crim Senior and Junior when they opened it. It's always been a family business. And then, you know, Nancy, after putting in 48 years, that's probably the only job you've ever had.
It is.
We appreciate that time that you put in. But I know you've decided to go on and take on other adventures, and I think everybody's involved on Facebook. You have sold it to another family-owned business. And it sounds like they're going to continue the great traditions that you've established there. So on behalf of city council, we would like to make tomorrow, Tuesday, November 8th, the Soother Crim Family Day in the city of Van Dalia.
Oh.
Thank you. We're going to get the proclamation there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, we'll move on to the city manager's report, where we have an information item. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. A couple of things here. First, the city of Van Dalia has two issues on the ballot, tomorrow, issue 25 and issue 26. Those are for opt-out electric aggregation and opt-out gas aggregation. This authorizes the city to negotiate on behalf of residents if it is passed. It doesn't mean that city council will enter into a contract, but what we would do is, we would explore the options, and when the market is right, we would consider whether to move forward with some sort of program for that. We have more information online, of course, at vandaliaohio.org/aggregation. One thing that'll bring to your attention, there's a ribbon cutting for Bo Townsend's Quick Lane on November 18th at 11:00 a.m. One other thing that I'd like to bring forward to you is that this week, well, last week, I submitted two applications for the Priority Development Advisory Advocacy Committee. One's for $15 million in funding for the Tri-City's North Regional Wastewater Authority. That's for improvements to the plant and collection system. We're submitting that as a joint application with Huber Heights and Tip City. There's a proposed $100 million between the collection system and the plant upgrades in the future, and so we hope to gain support for future grant applications to the EPA, to the state of Ohio directly for American Rescue Plan Act funding, et cetera. The other is a $400,000 submission requesting prioritization for Robinette Park. That's for an inclusive playground facility, splash pad improvement, putting a bathroom there to make that more of an inclusive and up-to-date park. And so we had a lot of letters of support, and we see that as a great improvement for that area and as a direct result of the forthcoming Park and Rec Master Plan that's going to be coming out here at the end of the year. So that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Now, we have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-74. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Quality Landscape Lawn and Fence, Inc. of Castown, Ohio, for the Sports Complex Ball Field Fence Replacement Project in the amount of $38,670.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks and Recreation Department solicited proposals for a ball field fence replacement project at the Sports Complex. Two fence companies submitted formal proposals with Quality Lawn Landscape and Fence Incorporated of Castown, Ohio, providing the overall best proposal of $38,670. The proposal includes replacement of outfield backstop and dugout fencing on Field 11 at the Sports Complex with nine-gauge black vinyl-coated chain-link fence fabric and all necessary equipment, supplies, and labor for the project. This is phase three in the ball field fence replacement plan, with phase one that was completed in 2017, phase two in 2019. The capital improvement budget has $40,000 appropriated for this project.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-74.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 22-R-74 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-75.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Bryan Brothers Painting and Restoration LLC for an exterior maintenance project at the municipal building in the amount of $33,860.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the Parks and Recreation Department solicited proposals for an exterior maintenance project at the municipal building. Three companies submitted formal proposals with Bryan Brothers Painting and Restoration LLC of Pickwa, Ohio, providing the overall best proposal of $33,860. The proposal includes masonry-controlled joint caulking, application of water repellent to the building exterior, cleaning of the exterior glass, and power washing and sealing of walkways and brick walls. The capital improvement budget has $35,000 appropriated for this project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-75 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-75 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-76.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to amend and update the commercial facade improvement program.
Mr. Went.
Your Honor, at the September 6th, 2022 city council study session, Assistant City Manager Holloway presented a two-year update on the city's facade improvement program. Based on feedback in that meeting, staff is proposing amendments to the program, including expanding it citywide and requiring that any revisions comply with all adopted plans.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-76.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-76. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-77.
A resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Van Dalia on behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its funds for the CD 34Y, CD 35Y Gabriel Street Reconstruction with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the Gabriel Street Reconstruction Project has been completed, and all supporting documentation and bonding has been received from our contractor. The final step is to request our reimbursement from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Director Cron secured an award of $398,832 in funding for this project, which I think is something to celebrate. Almost $200,000 of that was a grant. The other was a interest-free loan for five years. As part of the request from OPWC, a resolution of intent is required when a loan is involved stating that our disbursement will be placed in the proper fund to repay the loan as spelled out in our application. After submittal of this approved resolution, we will receive our final disbursement for the project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-R-77 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-77 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-78.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with SwimSafe Pool Management for Aquatic Staffing Services at Castle Hill Pool and the Van Dalia Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the city of Van Dalia entered into a two-year contract with SwimSafe Pool Management of Cincinnati in March 2020. That included an option for two additional one-year contract periods in 2022 and 2023. SwimSafe has submitted a formal proposal for the 2023 Aquatic Staffing Services Agreement for $144,000 at Castle Hill's Pool, $360,000 at the Van Dalia Recreation Center. The Parks and Recreation Department has completed an extensive review of SwimSafe's performance in 2022 compared with 2021, and we've also conducted a cost-benefit analysis to determine whether to conduct those services internally. It would cost about $150,000 additionally for us to take the services back in-house. Given the contractual agreements that we are planning to negotiate with SwimSafe and our understanding of the need for direct feedback and the conversations that we've had with our residents, I'm recommending entering into the agreement for the Aquatic Staffing Services with SwimSafe Pool Management for the year 2023 at a total cost of $504,000.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-78 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-78 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-79.
A resolution waiving competitive bidding to purchase one vehicle requested by the Division of Police from Bo Townsend Ford in the amount of $40,745.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, we spoke of this in our study session today. There was a police cruiser that was struck. It was not the police officer's fault. The police officer was okay and uninjured at the stop. We anticipated cycling this cruiser out of the fleet at the end of this year. We probably would have received about $15,000 in trade-in value. We've received a $43,720 check from the insurance payout. My proposal is that this money be directed towards purchasing an investigations vehicle from Bo Townsend. That would be an Explorer XLT model. It replaces a 2008 Crown Vic. These vehicles typically last 10 to 12 years in the unmarks in the police division. The cost of that vehicle will be $40,745, with just under $3,000 for an additional funds for equipping that vehicle with the necessary equipment that goes in it.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-79 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-79 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have a couple of ordinances in our first reading, the first one being ordinance 22-41. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance amending the city of Van Dalia Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. On October 3rd, Director Clark provided information to city council at the study session relating to Parks and Recreation Department fees. He provided a historical breakdown, cost recovery analysis, and recommendations for those updates. Those were previously shared with both the Golf Advisory Board and also at a separate meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There was not a quorum at that meeting. We've brought this forward in a previous study session and present this to you. In our prior study session, there was discussion about amending the ordinance to possibly just move forward with golf course fee updates so that the senior center fees, the Castle Hill swimming pool fees, and the Van Dalia Recreation Center fees can be brought back later this month to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. And so this ordinance has that new fee schedule, and also, from a staff perspective, we're completely in favor of that, if that's council's desire to amend the ordinance as it's presented now.
Did we need to have further discussion on the senior center, though?
You know, from my perspective, it's basically one and a half times, and it's kind of a nominal increase. It will, for the senior center, if I were to bring this up, to give you an idea of what that is...
Is that, because I don't know that there was any questions regarding that one, whether we could move that one forward or not.
The only two things to consider. One, most of our seniors, our members, pay in October, November, December, and so that's for the year that's coming. So it's not likely that they will actually pay the increased rate until fall of 2023. I think that it is fine to pass this if we would like to have the recommendation from the Park and Rec Advisory Board. This increase is not reflected in the proposed revenue budget, and so I have no reservation if council chooses to delay that. I don't really see any problem doing that if that's council's desire.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance by striking out all references to Castle Hill's Pool, the Van Dalia Recreation Center, and senior center, so that matter may be referred to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. My intention is that fees relating to Castle Hill's golf course move forward at its first reading and a subsequent motion as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to amend the ordinance to strike the Castle Hill's Pool, the Rec Center, and the senior center, and we're going to move forward with the golf. Any comments? Call the roll.
Just for purposes of clarification, so at the second reading of this ordinance, it'll basically be an ordinance amending the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule as to golf.
Yes, correct.
So that's how we would present it for the second reading, then. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the other three would just come out, and they would show up as a separate piece of legislation in the future.
In its first reading.
Okay. Thank you. That was just for me to clarify. Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have ordinance 22-42 in its first reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Van Dalia during the calendar year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. What I've got here before you is an ordinance to authorize appropriations for operating capital or revitalization efforts in fiscal year 2023. That matches up with the calendar year, of course. Budget's a product of incredible work by Finance Director Leiter, our Assistant Finance Director Kristen Karns, Assistant City Manager Amber Holloway, and I make up our primary budget team. Of course, we work, starting in July, with all of the departments. We try to understand every single expenditure and make sure that we're working towards the citywide policy goals that we have. From there, we sit down, we have rigorous budget hearings. A lot comes out of the budget. And then I come to you in a public meeting in the form of our budget workshops. I think this year, we met for less than five, but more than six hours in person. Maybe it was six hours in person in two separate meetings. So a lot of work has really gone into this. One of the things that I'll point out to you, the Finance Director has brought you a pack of paper to update your binders. Those are the updates that are as a result of the second budget hearing that we had. The ordinance that's before you is slightly, will show slightly different numbers. I, of course, have explanations for all of those. The inclusion of certain operating and maintenance expenses in the police division, calculations that were corrected relating to Medicare, changes in staffing proposal, and then, of course, revenues that come in and may not have been accounted for. For example, the $100,000 Community Development Block Grant that Parks and Rec Director Clark got for Helkey Park, the $225,000 grant that Chief Folick got for self-contained breathing apparatus in the Fire Division, et cetera. You'll notice that there is an additional expense in the healthcare fund that looks like $450,000 to claims. That's based on estimated amounts. This relates to the United Healthcare Transition, whereby, because there are better discounts, we also anticipate revenue. And so we're showing you on the expense side, the $450,000. There's also budgeted the revenue side of $450,000, so it's a net neutral change in case that, in case anybody was wondering about that. And so, thank you to staff, thank you to council for all the hard work and deliberation that went into this. We're really excited for all the good things that we're going to do to improve livability, quality of life, and the way that we serve the public in the city of Van Dalia.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 22-42 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve ordinance 22-42 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in their second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where we have the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of October 11th and the Van Dalia Records Commission Meeting Minutes of October 24th. Are there any comments on those?
All right, that brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald.
I'm not going to say anything.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
I'd just like to thank my wife, who's watching at home, verifying that I went to city council. We had a new baby girl on Halloween, and I'm really thankful to be able to come for our first reading of the budget, and so I'll be back home soon.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods.
Yes, I just brought tears to my eyes to give the acknowledgement to Airline Dairy Queen, because they've been exceptional next-door neighbors to my business over the years and clients as well. I did have to give up those addictive peanut butter milkshakes back in 1983, or I wouldn't be able to fit through that set of double doors as a result, but they're amazing, and it just warms my heart that we were able to acknowledge them.
All right, thank you. Councilman Blakesley.
I wanted to acknowledge as well about the budget workshops, there's an exorbitant amount of work, as Mr. Went had indicated, and it's always a pleasure to see how we really shake things out during the year. And I'm proud to see how we do the finances throughout the city, and it's something not too many people understand, that the budget. But I believe that's our number-one job, is to oversee that fiduciarily responsible. And then congrats to the Went family for the new arrival. Trick or treat, and you got the treat. And also, congratulations to Airline Dairy Cream for such a long, extended period of time of being an icon in this community and all their work throughout the years.
All right. Councilman Folick.
Just to repeat the congratulations that both Councilwoman Woods and Mr. Blakesley said to the Went family and the Airline Dairy Cream family. Two other things real quick. I know I shared with Mr. Went this morning. I just want to give accolades to staff, whoever was responsible. Both Councilwoman Fairst and I received a citizen complaint last Friday, I think. It was Friday? Friday?
Yeah, I think so.
About an ongoing issue where they had been working or making complaints about a streetlight with our vendors in town that was in front of a park in a bus stop and had not gotten any resolution over a period of time. So I know we passed that along to staff and got an email. I was kind of surprised this morning, I woke up to an email from a different citizen thanking us for the light's back on and the bus stop is now no longer dark. So I just want to congratulate staff or thank staff for whoever facilitated getting that taken care of as quickly as we did, especially over a weekend. And the other thing I wanted to point out was, I know that it's been provided to us as council through the budget process, and we hear things all the time about grants that the city staff have received. And if, I mean, I think this is one area that the city really needs to toot our own horn about. And so in our upcoming, whether it's our newsletter or our annual report, I think the amount of money that our city staff continuously obtains grant funding for everything, you know, from the smallest grant of $5,000 all the way up to, you know, quarter of a million dollars or more. We've, staff over the past couple of years have really kicked it into high gear and are aggressively chasing after grant funding to help spread or help our tax dollars, spread our tax dollars out, allow us to do more things here in Van Dalia. So kudos to staff and everyone that's involved in that ongoing pursuit. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fairst.
Just piggybacking a little bit on what Councilman Folick said, in our last budget, in this budget we just passed tonight, we appropriated money to do more communication, so more newsletters, so hopefully in the coming months... so more newsletters, so hopefully in the coming months, you will see more of those type of things. We'll have an opportunity to put that information out there. It won't just be on social media, but will come to your homes in that form that you can read more about what's happening at the city, because really, there are an immense amount of projects going on that you would all be amazed at. It's just hard to get that information out there, so hopefully this will help us, and congratulations, and I don't know if everybody heard, you have a girl, so on top of those lively two boys, it will be perfect, I'm sure, so congratulations to that, and thank you, everybody. The budget workshop went very well, and it is a lot of work, mostly for staff, and it's much appreciated. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ayers?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate Dan and his wife, Laura, on the new arrival. Thank you.
Brings us to Vice Mayor Lewis.
Afraid I'm out of original thought. I would also like to congratulate Dan, and I would also like to thank the city council and the staff as well on the budgetary process, and as Councilwoman Blakesley had mentioned, as a councilperson, you are supposed to make policy, but you have two primary functions, as I see it, and that is to hire a city manager, because we are city manager, form of government, and to try to guide and implement policy that direction, and the other primary function is the budget, and it takes a lot, a lot of work, and a lot of advice, and a lot of questions to come up with both our capital budget and our operating budget, and I thought the process went very, very well, and I feel good about the finances of the city of Vandelia. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Well, going last, I have no original thoughts, but I, too, would like to congratulate the Went family, well, specifically Ms. Laura Went, for the baby girl, and as Mr. Went's mentioned a couple of times tonight, and I know Councilman Folick also brought this up, I would like to, again, thank staff for securing all the grants and the funding opportunities that they're finding right now, because that, you know, it saves the taxpayers a lot of money, and it brings a lot of the money home to Vandelia, so hopefully you'll be able to see some of the fruits of the hard work that our staff is doing right now. That's all I have, and at this time, it's recommended that council enter into executive session for, number one, the discussion with the city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action, and, number two, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and condition of their employment. Can I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor that we go into executive session. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0.